Yes, yes. Good evening and welcome to Thursday, December seventh, twenty twenty-three, in the six forty board, six forty, here we go, have a call. Rebecca, we have a post-gip agenda, do we have a second? Let's have a better settlement. All in favor?
I am.
At six thirty, I'm Mr. Larson, we have a continued public hearing for major site review. Your meeting is placed on August.
How are you all doing tonight?
Fine.
Yeah.
Hi. So, of course, I wish you could hear us.
Uh, my name is David Eisen. We're eighteen group place in Citrum. He's a shop and hoping to classify our building this evening.
Yeah. So, um, so, I need to roll it, so I give you also.
So why did I start?
No, like yours.
Um, so I've met a couple of times with Mr. Larson, okay? And I think the bottom line is that the board needs to decide on the building type. Now, I think there is two possibilities. Uh, the first is flex space fabrication building. And but by definition, a flex space fabrication is supposed to be on a public street. I don't know why that took the definition, doesn't make sense to me. But, um, he, that would, he would need a waiver on that. The other waiver that he would need is for a side yard. Um, a flex space fabrication building requires twenty foot front yard, side yard, and rear and rear yard. And I think that because of the way the site is, the only way to do this flex space fabrication building is to put a ten foot side yard. So, I think a flex space fabrication building fits more of a definition of a shopper plumber. But.
You can't say, Mr. Shopper, public, you haven't been get electricity, job, person, make a, make a name, or a side, they get water, or both. So that just works what we do as.
Oh, I can vote into that.
Do you like your work, Mr. Larson?
I'm gonna hold.
So, so, so that would work, is, is that.
That would work.
Yeah.
The other option is a general commercial building. Waivers are needed for that as well. Uh, the front yard is zero to twenty feet. The building, as proposed, setback thirty-one point three eight feet. The straight face in Laurel is put, it was sixty to a hundred feet. What is proposed here is thirty-two feet. I kind of think the waivers under a flex space fabrication are less, um, less onerous than, um, a, than a general commercial building.
I'm driving not to a general commercial building.
I think, I mean, I think that a flex space fabrication building really fits, it's, it's, it's one of our building types.
Yep.
And so then we would have a lot of use, a lot of building type, but the board would have to grant a couple waivers.
Um, it is adjacent to the ten foot setback.
Um. Who's next door to you, Mr. Larson, or the post one?
Yeah, next door is the T on the left side and then.
No.
On the side.
Crow, all Crow.
All Crow, okay.
On the right.
You know, the new.
Um, I wouldn't add until we said.
It's been modified. Um, so, the other thing that they've done, and you got a new pair review, but, um, the other thing, they submitted revised plans on Monday, so I've not had those reviewed. They've removed, removed the drainage from the water resource protection district, which is A plus as well. So, he's also proposing a landscape screen in between the structure, the proposed building and the adjacent property. So, it seems to me like it's, that's probably the way.
And what kind of screen?
Um, it is.
There is a tree.
There is a tree line here now.
Um.
Um.
It shows evergreens, I'm not really sure, plan tells me what it is.
This is, this is a big plan to get there.
No, this is not, this is the plan that, that you guys already see.
So, the trees that were along the north property line? Who's next?
Um, green giant apple bodies.
Those new or supposed to exist?
Green.
Those being.
Okay.
Now, wait a minute, they would be rose shrubs, Alex, Labor, and Sergeant Junior, we're gonna wanna change that.
Yeah.
We're, we're gonna wanna change the shrubs on this side so that they're.
Tall.
They're, they're, they're screening every green.
Okay.
Yeah, if we, if we waited the setback, if you want us, real screening.
Any other issues there besides the screening?
Um, I, I, I don't really think that there, I mean, it's, uh, I don't really think so. I think that, uh, you know, the major thing we wanna get done tonight is building type. Ninety-nine percent sure that drainage is like gonna be resolved, um, so, um.
Yeah, I'm sorry, what was the second waiver?
It's supposed to be on a public street. So, for all intents and purposes, I mean, this street is used like a public street, so, you know, it.
We have many of these even in classified ten, this, this type of building?
Wait, no, we, we don't have, I mean.
This would be the.
This would be the first one.
Okay.
Do we have other ones that you could probably classify as a flex space fabrication? Yeah, I think I would think.
No, no, I just meant have we, have we actually.
We haven't actually done one.
Okay.
So, we need a waiver for setback, what else we need, where you from?
Public street.
Public street, sorry.
I have a problem with that.
Does the child buy your street?
Yes.
Well, there you go.
For all intents and purposes, it's used as a public street.
Yeah.
I mean, so.
I think it's good as long as there's enough screening along the setback side.
Should get that, Mr. Larson, what we should put bigger, what's this between them? All good, it'll be okay. What's across the street from you?
Um, I think, uh, it's just a vacant lot, um, Kevin Wilson landscaping has a little trailer there or something that he claims of. It's like the backside, or Bernie used to literally pick on a package.
Did you have those over there, apple like that?
I, yeah, maybe.
Yeah.
It's, it'd be, be re, be.
Can I say one thing about the landscape? Um, so currently, the, the left side of the property has tree line all the way down the west side. And the back does have, um, trees as well. I did plant twelve hydrangeas that had come in line quite well in the front of the house, so. Yeah, we had asked that maybe, we didn't move the fence back, I didn't understand you.
Yeah, I don't think you need to move the fence.
Okay.
I, I don't think you need to touch that fence.
Cause it has nice grass front.
Right, it has nice grass, I think the fence is fine, I don't think you need to touch the fence. I think, like, like Steve said, I think we just need a beefed up screening on the side.
Yep.
Adjacent to the residential property.
Yep.
And I can, you know, work with you on that, um, but otherwise, I, I think that we're, we're practically there.
Yep. The process, but we are here.
Okay, sure. No, I agree with the, uh, landings.
And then, so you wouldn't have to do a mezzanine inside the building, wouldn't have to have that upper office in that building.
That's plus.
If you go in flex space.
Right, exactly.
Did you, do people look at the building? I mean, he's made some improvements, they, there's coupla on it now, it also is like designed a little like wooden baton.
Well, you're big, you gotta get the, uh.
Yeah, I sent it to him.
Oh, okay.
So this is, this is exactly how it.
So.
Isn't it?
No, it's gonna be, the building is probably a little smaller scale, I mean, it's not really the scale.
It's not really the scale high, it's in there, but that's.
But it gives us the idea.
It's not the scale in terms of height or width or width versus.
I mean, so.
Sorry, I'm just looking at it.
It would be, it's very close, I, I had a, a friend of mine do that, but he, it was brachygodons, it came out pretty well. Just kinda, I mean.
What's the building type?
It's same as the existing, it's actually, yeah.
What, what?
Existing is twenty-five feet.
Twenty-five.
The new one would be twenty-six. Do the P.
But doesn't it have to be twenty-six feet high if you don't do the mezzanine now?
Um. Yeah.
I mean, cause it looks, this picture makes it look a little, exactly, a little tall.
Right, this, you know why? Because it's. It needs to, it's, it's got a little bit more, and then one less tall. That's just what, that's all he really had to work with, so it would be the same height as the existing building.
It just looks, look at the garage doors.
Be a little bit wider.
It, this thing is not the scale because this is.
To scale.
Supposed to be thirty-two feet wide, sixty feet long.
Yep.
Right.
And that's twenty-six feet up.
Yeah.
And that, that's dimensions off.
Yeah, it is not large.
But it, it looks a little.
Aaron, what one do you know?
I mean, it will be proportionate as it.
It looks, no, this is not what we're looking.
Yeah, oh, that, all right, so I sent you guys that one too, but.
Okay.
This is the one I sent you to that he tried to place in.
Yeah.
On the property, I think this is a little, uh, I think how it's sitting in this picture is a little out of scale.
So what's the next step here?
Yeah, that does.
Well, I think that's just photo shots.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I had to put the trans, over the windows and the upper windows.
What are the, the garage doors?
Fourteen. This, so it's just.
Yeah.
This was based off of the picture I got from Morton.
It's just not.
Yes. Right.
So I guess.
But it's time to give you a general idea, that's exactly how it would look, same colors, black doors, white windows, coupla in the middle, black roof, wooden baton siding.
Who's your neighbor to the left, I guess, like, so I'm a neighbor on fourth place, that service master?
Oh, he's behind me. Behind me?
Yeah, I'm sorry, behind you, yeah.
The neighbor behind is, uh, you can see the building in it, is, uh, John O'Keefe, and then, then the service master, you can actually see one of the buildings. Then the service master.
And the O'Keefe building is a wooden building that, um, has, doesn't that have a little bit of wooden baton?
It is a wooden baton.
Yeah, wooden baton.
Weathered, weathered wood.
It's weathered wood, yeah.
But that came in as like commercial.
That came in as a mixed-use special apartment, uh, back, back to the day.
I'm gonna say, that's, that's the whole place.
Right, yeah.
Right, right, right. But, I, I think because I, this was like this photo shop, so it's probably not, I just feel like it's gonna be the same.
Yeah, it's gonna be exactly like that.
I, I'm.
I'm trying to give you best for sure.
I have any more questions, I must ask.
I'm all set.
Mind me, there's nothing to the left side, that's the T fence. And, uh, you know, you hear the training run.
I can hear.
Now it shuts off.
Lost in the picture.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then, I mean, it looks like a main road, but like you say, it's dead end, it's like literally no traffic, no foot traffic. So it's quiet.
All right, so then, obviously, we have to continue this, I think the next time we'll probably be ready for a decision. I work with Mr. Larson in the, um, I, they did submit, I'll have the second set of plans periodued now, um, and I, I think they were, it was back close to addressing the drainage. So now, the screening, I'll work with Mr. Larson on the screening, and we're going to the flex space fabrication building, we're going to grant two waivers. And so, then, um.
We'll take a decision on that screening.
Yeah, right, with the right screening. So.
I mean, I'm happy to put in.
Well, let's just get something specific on the plan here.
Right, um, you and I can, maybe you can call me, and we can arrange to have a meeting so that you can come in and get, and we'll, we'll figure it out.
Okay. I mean, I know several tree guys, I mean, they can tell me, I just don't wanna put in an apple body that deer is gonna want.
Right, I think we don't want.
It has nothing more uncertain than then never even things.
You know, there's red cedars, there's, um, there's different, uh, there's different options, so why don't you talk to your landscaper, get some ideas?
Yeah, and there are some apple bodies, they won't eat, and they grow fairly quick, so.
What is pesky deer?
Uh, I don't.
So, we're gonna have to continue you to, um, February.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I move to accept. I move to accept the applicant's request to continue public hearing for major site and administrative review. That department for general commercial building in the village center and native district, Rainbow's just, Ripway Gateway District, Rainbow's, Rainbow's Village Center Sub District, B C N G D G G B C until February eighth, twenty twenty-three, at seven fifteen P M, and to continue the time for action, the final of the town for, until March twenty-ninth.
Okay. All in favor?
I am.
You're all set, Mr. Larson?
Thank you.
We'll see you in February.
Oh, sure.
What?
What, what?
It's dangerous. The couples shit. They just killed up to the.
Yeah, it's not a hook, it's a, it's a hook shot.
Right.
It wasn't supposed to be.
No, no, we can do that. I mean, you can, if you wanna do minutes and that stuff, or.
Aaron.
Mr. Larson, have a nice following, Mr. Larson.
You too, thanks so much, who's that?
February eighth at seven fifteen.
Okay, thank you.
I move to approve requisition of one thousand one hundred twenty dollars to Chesapeake Consulting Theory of Services for nineteen forty. For one hundred forty dollars to Chesapeake for Theory of Services about forty-three hundred way. At least one thousand four hundred forty dollars to Tech Inc. for Theory of Services for eight seventeen, countrywide.
Second question. All in favor?
I am.
All right.
Some sidewalk front, up back to the tree.
Sidewalk was done on before, the neighborhood's note, they got really good, um, really good, they had a lot of expert base material in there, um, you know, the sidewalk is put down, um, gold houses, now have full COs, we're still holding, um, some surety on, um, we reduce the surety to ten grand, and we'll probably reduce it a little bit more after we get the final act built. But we can't return all the surety until the spring time when the grass is put, cause the grass wasn't put yet, right? We agreed to keep extra pavement, provided way, right down to make it more stable during the winter. So, it, that, that part came, it came off good.
Mostly, it does. I move to approve the meeting minutes from November sixteenth to November three.
All in favor?
I am.
Never know to, I, I haven't seen any of your bubble days, I except, I will say that I did watch the school presentation last night, um, at Halloween School, interesting, um, I, I don't know how to criticize, they're very important, we've got a building, new building, a lot of children, a lot of, so all the little boys will have a great time, they get straight about. And I can just talk that, uh, the general with the cushy school was not in the budget, so they wanted to know how much that should cost.
They were, they were. Didn't all see it?
There was no cost associated with it, so when they go back, they're gonna be that great. Be interesting, I don't know what your quarter probably is, was that recorded, yeah, yeah, so, uh, it was interesting, they, um, looks like, we're supposed to guys, it's, um, very interesting, so, they can talk a whole lot about money, so let's see, I don't know about that, I don't know about it. Anybody else want to answer?
I had talked to the bike committee last month, uh, they're making, they're still in the early stages of their organization, but they're looking at prioritizing some there. How to get funding and prioritizing where they might like to put bike paths, so I did encourage them to watch our agendas and keep an eye out for meetings affecting, you know, developments affecting public ways, where they may want to comment on the locations of bike paths or, you know, bike access, so Karen, I think, um, Nancy Warner, who's the, the head of the bike committee, may reach out to you, try to find some time and talk to you about some of the things they're focusing on. So I gave her your, you know.
Okay.
But I, like, I, you know, I let them know about the development near Ripway, how we approved, you know, that's your sidewalk, there's a condition to that. Just so they're aware of what's going on, what's planned for future areas as they think about their priorities.
Thank you. I did the House of Trust, but nothing really happened.
Okay, well, we're, that's why the E U, nobody really likes to do too much, so.
The only thing that sort of segues into affordable House of Trust is what was in the goal for what we got. And the fact of the matter is, to afford an affordable unit in the area, you would have to earn six thousand dollars plus. Is it two grand for one bedroom? It's ridiculous, and so people are, don't make enough money to qualify for that, but make too much money to qualify.
Sexually, most of us.
Or, it, what is wrong with this picture? And how do we fix it?
Well, I don't think we can fix it, the state issue right now, right? That, that affordable building is supposed to state, that's that one, that comes from that, so, I mean, I don't, like, as, as much as we could all talk about that, it's not anything.
There's nothing you can do about it, nothing.
Not right now.
I don't think the legislature that we have to agree on is, uh, that advanced.
I, I think that they don't have to rest for you, you got them.
And the, the funds that the state gets are all based from federal standards, so, but, but nationwide, they don't have as big a handle on that sort of middle-class affordability issue as we do, I think, on the coasts, and by and large, in certain areas of the coast, so that's, that's the other issue too.
We do it.
Um, and the state has the cost to construct community units, continues to rise, so the state programs rapidly run out of money.
They just give us the infrastructure to support these, the new developments.
Rebecca, you have enough that we may work on.
No, I don't.
And I, 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 I was supposed to be there, so we gave such an advisory, but they always leave with a lot of weird. So, uh, all as I know is that I can read all the minutes in, of last week, uh, if you have a chance, I could be a post-gip. But it's a big deal with, um, funding, Mr. Larson. They want separate police officers because we can no longer hire hutch-eyed police officers, we need to public police, they don't. So it's one of the ramifications that people wanted this done so well to be that we're gonna get our boost out of our head, so. And they margin something about hiring retired police or something.
I thought we did that in town.
Yeah, we did that in town, we didn't say it that. So other than that, we have nothing else to do except what we do, this is.
Ring the bells.
Karen?
All right, so, um, I've seen no further progress on seaside in Citrum, so there's been, uh, I think the bond has not been, you know, reduced because the, uh, net, the maintenance wasn't done to our standards, so, that.
This was the last request to hit?
Yeah.
Probably have to finish that before we can take a heat.
Uh, well, probably, yeah, I have site visits supposedly on Monday to review the ASBIL fourteen sixteen on Country Way. The local action unit was approved, um, their law expires next week, they're trying to get potentially, um, either a surety reduction or something before the fifty, but I don't have a letter for a surety reduction or anything.
Oh, I'm sorry, who's this?
Fourteen to sixty on Country Way.
Oh.
Bronchus old site.
So I'm gonna go, so, I know that bike commit at the last minute, you know.
How does it look, Karen? What do you think?
I would go, I'm gonna, I think, right, I've heard it looks really good. Uh, it, it, it was good to have two, the two different buildings that don't look a hundred percent alike, you know, that part was really good. I, I've heard from, from people, um, I met with the new town council today, well, the town council effective January first, but he's gonna be responsible for zoning, so he has, he has the M V T A zoning, he has the Riverland, he has the Red Line, he's gonna be reviewing it, um, for next week.
What's his name?
Brian Burcom, from Harrington Heath, L L P. They, they changed their name, it was Maiaris in Harrington, but they were about changing their name, um, and now it's, um, Harrington Heath, uh. So, uh, you know, I kind of told him a lot of, I gave him the staff, I sent it on Monday, he understands he's gotta review it, um, and he, um, I gave him some of the background and some of the other projects that we're working on, and, um, you know, said, we, so I'm sure these projects, we have some projects that are winding down, that, you know, some, you know, some, um, stubborn projects, um, that, you know, may need help with, um, and, you know, we have some problematic stormwater permits, but, you know, gave them label, label it.
Is there anything happening with the post-trip home on Country Way?
They're coming in for informal discussion next time, you're, you're meeting on the fourteenth, I have scheduled that to come in. So, I have received nothing, um, I told him about that because obviously, um, if it is coming in under the Dover amendment, townhouse rules could be, wanna be all over that, but, you know, they're coming in next time. We haven't gotten any filing or anything, so, interest, but that's, um, that's kind of where we are, I had two meetings this week with two potential developers, I think they're just, one developer, I think, was trying to look for a project in Citrum, um, and, you know, we went through a M V T A zoning, and of course, the big problem that we tell all the developers when they come in is, um, it's, it's infrastructure, we need to work and water infrastructure, and, uh, you know, that's the bottom line.
They, they wanna bring it, they can come on.
If they, if they wanna bring it, then Jim and I will sit down with them and talk. So, I guess now we'll go into the zoning workshop portion of the, our meeting tonight. Um, we'll start with section three day compliance, um, so, um, I'm kind of trying to do it back with the, the public. So um, I'm kind of trying to do it back with a bit of public hearing. And so we have a PowerPoint presentation that we're just going to run through. I think I can probably do. Do this really quickly so we can get to the actual, you know, learning. The objective of three eight comply, you don't have a PowerPoint.
Oh, thank you. We're looking for assets not there. Okay.
The objective of three eight compliance is uh, for Massachusetts to, you know, it's it's really to develop housing, to zone for housing. It's about more transit oriented housing and development. There's statutory requirements associated with the um, with whatever we have to do. We E O H L C revised guidelines in August of twenty twenty three to receive. So towns can receive some credit for mixed use development zoning districts if you apply for a mandatory mixed use district. It allows to offset about twenty five percent of the unit capacity of a mixed use zoning district that requires ground floor, um, non residential. It's only available in approved locations. You must, we must seek approval no less than ninety days prior to town meeting vote. Mixed use can only be on the ground floor and not more than thirty three, thirty percent of the overall square footage. No minimum parking for commercial uses allowed. Maximum ten percent affordability for a buy right project without a financial feasibility analysis. So because situat is a commuter rail community. We have been, we have to zone for twelve hundred and thirty nine multifamily units. We have two areas that we are zoning for this. We have situat and we have Green Bush. So right now in Green Bush, we have the village center in New York District. Where we are trying to achieve most of our unit capacity. We are going to be applying for a mandatory mixed use district for the N D T V sub district in Green Bush. And for the North Situate Village Center Sub District in North Situate. We can. The compliance model indicated we can get two hundred and nine units from both of those two sub districts. So we subtract that from, you know, the twelve thirty nine, we have to zone for twelve, ten, uh, one thousand and thirty units. As we went through the compliance model, it was run several times. Though the shot of it is that in the G W B, N R N and G B C districts. We can go to fifteen units per acre by right, up from twelve units per acre by right. If we get our mandatory mixed use districts approved. Otherwise, the numbers become higher. So this, we're trying to keep it as close to the existing bylaw now as we can.
Karen, how many, how many acres in each one of those? Like, how how many houses does that represent potentially? Interest.
How many houses?
Yeah, because you're going, well, so you're adding three per acre.
You're adding three per acre.
And how many acres is?
Um, well, you have to have fifty acres in the district. So I mean, it's.
So the combination of three is fifty?
We didn't, I I don't, we didn't look at that number. It's in the compliance model probably, but we didn't really.
So we're roughly talking about.
It it's not a huge increase.
Roughly thought about a hundred and fifty.
It could be.
Like fifty acres per acre.
Yeah. But the, it's it's going to be less than that because the G W B and N R N and G B C don't take up the whole fifty acres.
That's why I asked the question.
Right, okay, so we'll have to. We'll try to um.
You might want to have that number in case people are asking, well, how many, you know, the house and units is that? Because it's probably not that many, right?
Well, we'll look at the compliance model. To try to have that number. Okay.
And it's all, it's staying at twenty four.
Right, 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 right. So the only, the only thing that changes is the minimum, the minimum density by right. Other changes to zoning, um, you know, include changing D H C D to E O H L C throughout the bylaw. We're adding pertinent definitions. We're adding a mandatory mixed use district. Under section three ten, we have to change the table of use regulations uh, for a couple of things. We taking, we're taking out the existing section four thirty point three because it doesn't apply to anything. We're clarifying the location of pedestrian frontage zones. We're revising the densities by right. We're allowing for ten percent, we have to change affordable housing requirements to allow for ten percent affordable in the V C N for by right projects only. We have a couple of changes to purposes for compliant districts. And we're eliminating commercial commercial parking in the V C N for mixed use districts only.
Will we have the mandatory thing approved before town meeting? From D H C D or?
It should be because we have, we have to submit it ninety days prior to town meeting.
Yeah.
Our goal is to submit it before Christmas. So I kind of let town council.
So we'll admit our obligation.
Right, we'll admit our obligation. I think they can take up to about ninety days to do, to approve it.
Should.
And so I'm sure they will, but we're trying to get it done before our actual deadline. Um, and hopefully town council understands what the pressures that we're trying to operate under. We're also going to be applying for preapproval of our zoning and compliance model. So that hopefully the goal is that when we go to town meeting, we can say, we've heard back from the state and this is what they said. So this is a must comply, it's a shall comply. If you don't comply, you're ineligible to receive. Funds from about fifteen different grant programs. So it's 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 kind of a major amount of grant programs that you're. You know, I I'm not going to read the whole list right now, but.
But is there, is there a way to characterize it to say, like, in the past, situates participated in these half of those or something like that? Or we've got extra million dollars home or something?
I can probably guess. I can probably get that.
Yeah, so people understand.
We don't, we have NAS Works.
We know we had a two point two million NAS Works grant before. Housing choice grants are new. I don't know, we, I don't know what other types of grants that we got, but um, I think we have got. We may have got an M V P grant of work too.
What type of grant?
A municipal volunteer building. Because those plans are big and heavy right now too. And so we may have gotten money. We may have gotten money from there. I can fi- I can find out what grants we've gotten um, to.
Yeah, it might be good just to have kind of a global set of statistics, just because somebody's going to say, well, so what? Right?
Well, yeah, so it's making all the changes to the zoning worth the.
Exactly.
Worth of it, yeah.
It is, absolutely.
You have to, you have to do it. You have to comply.
Have to do it.
We have to comply. It's a shall. It's not, it's not a, it's not a.
Yeah, what's the grant we changed?
Some towns, some towns are not doing it.
Well, we did mostly had to get forward the shape.
I I don't know that. I I don't know that some towns are totally not doing it. I think they're trying not to do it, but um, some towns have already complied.
Well, it's a shall comply and if you comply, you have access to these grants. I'm not saying that we shouldn't comply, but what's. What if we just said, hey, no, we're not going to comply. We we need access to these grants and will the state take us to court?
Yes, state, I mean, the attorney general is threatened to say you're to take people to court. But um, we don't know exactly what happens.
We won't be, we won't be believed on that. I think it will be.
Yeah, oh, now.
No, it's gonna be like, you.
You know, Milton's, we don't, no kid could listen to riots. Newton passed zoning the other night, so it's very.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I know they were a big fight.
Milton was in a big fight with him. Was it Milton or Desper, one night at town meeting on just the first article, and it was this.
That was probably Milton's. I mean, Milton had, Milton has to comply by the end of this year because there are rapid transit.
And what they're trying to say is that that little itty bitty railroad.
Trolley.
Trolley makes them rapid transit, but it's still very close. But if you remember in the beginning, was it Wallfield?
Yeah.
That said, no, and the state pulled three hundred thousand from their public housing.
Right, so we don't know what other implications besides some of these grants that they're already telling us that you can't apply for. But we don't know what else right now.
That stick can get bigger.
That is, yes.
And right here, you're right. And even though we don't use them, we may want to use some of them.
Right, we may want to use them. It's um, it's um, I mean, we were just grant, we've granted status this year as a housing choice community. That opens you up. You can obtain different housing grants through that housing choice program.
I I just think, I think it's a smart idea to have the answer because I do think people will ask that.
Okay, all right.
It's like, oh, we've heard, agreed, got great benefits, great, it's why we want to.
Because it's out there where some towns are saying now.
We could probably have a lot of field to be developed. Maybe we produce maybe a real estate service system. We have no idea what they do.
Could do a destruction program, do.
Yeah, yeah, putting a surround.
Rural, small town development.
Yeah, I mean, there is, there is a a bill that's still in, you know, the working. To try to get money for, you know, the state understands, the secretary of housing, the P J, the E O H L C. And the lieutenant governor fully understand. Because all communities are saying, when you want all this housing, you have to help give us infrastructure. I mean, so that has been hammered, hammered in. I mean, I went to a meeting a few weeks ago and. They fully understand that that's what, you know, we. In order to develop this, you have to have infrastructure. And part of this bill, they were saying, is going to provide other funding sources. So to help make improvements to the infrastructure. But still, some of this infrastructure is quite a ways away, you know. Way, Wayman has been working, you know, to try to get M W R A and, you know, it's, it. It's, it's hard. Because you have to agreements with other towns and how do you force a town? I mean, we're in this situation. How do you force a town to cooperate? How do you force coacid to cooperate? You know, so that you can try to make improvements to and do some type of regional sewer. But I'm I'm getting off track a little bit.
I see what you're saying.
And so, so we can go over the different um, the zoning article if you want. So there's going to be one zoning article for the M T A session three day compliant. And it's got multiple different sections. Okay, that I, I sent that to everybody. You know, the first one, A, we have to change D H C D to E O H L C. We have to amend the zoning map. There's a small section of the pedestrian frontage zone. That has to change. We also, we have to eliminate, go over the pedestrian frontage zone. We also have to change one parcel. In the um, that's right now in the outer village, it's permitted in the village center. Because it is all owned by one person. It might be two different, it's the parking to the Ford building. So we have to, that's all going to be put as one um parcel, so therefore we have to change the zoning map. The definitions, we're adding affordable units, applicant area being income, commuter rail station. E O H L C, M T A, mandatory mixed use districts, sub district. We're changing the title of multi family dwelling, three, multi family dwelling slash multi family building. The, we're adding number D, we're adding a man, a mandatory mixed use. We're clarifying which some districts it will be, it will be um. The N D T V and the Village Center in North Situate. The table of use regulations, we're making a couple of minor changes to that. We're deleting the multi family dwelling complex because it doesn't apply to anything. We're amending the garage for commercial vehicles to correct, make a correction there. We're adding flex space fabrication building. We're actually putting it in the table of uses. We're ch- we're making a correction on the um, heading from N C R and our. And our C R. We are putting a multi family dwelling in the G W B district. It has to be allowed by rights. We had it by special permit before. So those are. In a nutshell, that's the changes to the table of use. Um, we're deleting section four thirty point three in its entirety because it doesn't apply to anything. There was never any district that was created for that. So we might as well get rid of it right now. Number G, we're amending the per- the purpose section of five eighty point two to clarify um. The location of the pedestrian frontage zone. H, we're striking with prayers for board appeals because the planning board is special permit granting authority for the V C N, not the board of the. The table of uses, we're, I mean, the uh. The rent, the residential density, the three changes we're making are multi family buildings, changing. Changing in the G W B, N R N, G B C from twelve units per acre by right to fifty units per acre by right. Couple of semantic changes in five eighty point nine, we're taking out in a limited amount of residential. Because that's not really what's happening. It's real residential. I were amending the fair housing and affordability standards. To clarify about by right developments for ten percent affordable housing. This is what a lot of communities are doing. They're just going with the ten percent right now. You know, we were at fifteen percent. Um, density bonus is still going to be at twenty percent. Some communities, I've heard of going back later and, you know, then they might do a financial feasibility analysis, but they're trying to just get the zoning passed. Right up front. We're taking out a sentence in seven fifty four one V three that doesn't take offense and you can't have it now. Because of the affordability stuff. You know, we're, we're changing um. Monitoring agent, it was, within there that the select board gets to decide the monitoring agent. Well, that's not what happens. It's the planning board in conjunction with the applicant. We're changing the section. Uh, we're just updating C M R forty five is not the. Doesn't have the lip programs done at C M R fifty six. Uh, parking requirements, we are putting in that no commercial parking is required in the um. V C N. G U G, M E T and V C. And also to affiliate V C districts.
No commercial parking?
Yeah, wait a minute, I got my, I might go recommend that. It's only for by right projects. So let me go back, I'll go back and look at that. And then we're just changing, um, two things that in the, um, in section K, we're just cleaning up some language that doesn't go fine in, adding DCN and taking out some apartment, garden apartment that doesn't even have any relevance in the zoning bylaw.
Let's hope we don't focus at the end of the meeting.
Yeah, we're just over.
Oh, well, zoning, zoning, they follow a process, and so zoning is going to fall closer to the end of the meeting.
It really, like, I think the, the biggest changes overall were that Green Bush upping the buyer per acre to twelve and fifteen.
Right.
And the other side is more like housekeeping.
The other side, it, yes, it's, it's, you, you summed it up right. Most of this is housekeeping.
Yeah.
It's, it's not, it's, it's not a big deal. I mean, we, because we changed the zoning in two thousand and nineteen and for Green Bush in two thousand and twenty one for North Situate, we were, we were practically there. If you remember, at the last minute, we threw in the fifteen units per acre by right in North Situate because we had just found out that this passed, so we didn't have to make any changes there now. Now, this is all banking on that we get the mandatory mixed use districts. If we don't get the mandatory mixed use districts, which I don't see why we wouldn't, but we'll have to up the numbers. We can't, we cannot get, you know, that offset, that twenty five percent offset really helps us.
In reality, it's not what, you know, like, we don't think we want most of the revenue. Ah, two pieces of property.
Well, I don't know, there are people coming in all the time to meet with us, we know of, you know, you've got three projects right now that are approved and haven't even started construction. We already had two other meetings, you already have two others, you know, in the works right now with eighteen Drew and nineteen Ford. And we've already met with two other people who want to do projects, so until the economy pulls out, it's going to happen, but this, to be in compliance for section three A zoning, you just have to zone for it, you don't have to build it. Of course, the state does want to see the housing units built because they, their theory is that the more housing that's built, then that will hopefully drop the price of rents and all that kind of stuff. We have the transit, we, we, we developed the zoning so that housing could be built near our transit stations. So this is really just housekeeping, we tried to keep it as close to what was approved in zoning as we, as we could.
Yes.
We, we had a consultant, we got a grant from Mass Housing Partnership, our consultant worked with us to develop the zoning. And I think that that, you know, that gives a lot of credence to what, what we've done.
No, it's like, to get in compliance with this, I think it's important to get it done, especially if it changes from twelve to fifteen in Green Bush. That way, it can be presented on the town meetings that we're bringing Green Bush to the same like, level as North Situate that we did two years ago or three years ago.
It's a no big deal.
Yeah.
It was no big deal.
It's no big deal.
It's no big deal, I mean, and to not have the commercial parking for a by right project, you saw on some of the projects you've already permitted, you know, it's one space per five hundred square feet if it's a mixed use on the ground floor. They've got thirty five hundred square feet of commercial space that's set in spaces. When you have an existing MBTA parking lot in Green Bush, you have a public parking lot in North Situate as well as MBTA parking lot in North Situate. There should be plenty of parking, they still have to provide the residential parking. So it's, it's, it's not a, it's not a vast quantity of parking spaces that you're talking about.
Well, the, the unfortunate part is, however, people still feel that there's no parking. When in fact, what they want is parked in front of CBS so they don't walk. I mean, that's.
That's part of it, yeah.
I mean.
But that's why you had.
Yeah, but sometimes it's hard to find parking, it's hard.
Yeah, sometimes it is hard. I mean, it depends on the time of the year.
Do you, uh, for, uh, Friday night, it's.
Well, it's for a surprise.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's tricky.
Not, and I don't leave close to CBS, I'm, I'm going way back there by the Van Sant, there's still none, you gotta go through your four rows in.
Yeah. But this, I mean, the whole idea was to have transit oriented development with walking zones, your pedestrian frontage zones, so that your buildings were up to the street, you have the sidewalks, you're trying to engage the public outside walk to be in. So hopefully, they park once and they'll walk. That was the whole idea.
Yes, and that's the malls, Central Plaza and whatever, you know, the mall, they're, they're going to the Derby Street model where people walk between, they park once and they walk to different stores. So this idea of parking and, I don't know, it's just, I worry ahead of the bird, we've done a great job here.
Thank you, so, I mean, so we had a subcommittee, you know, work on this, and it consisted of Patty, Chari, myself, Jim Woodrow, and Karen Colley, and so we met multiple times to, to work on this and meet with our consultant who I think serves, served us well. So that's what I have for the MBTA communities, I don't know if you want to see if anybody has any, get any questions on it?
Well, it's a board of eight here.
I don't, I don't.
No, this is a nice circle piece of graphic.
So is there anyone online that would like to ask a question or comment?
If you're online and like to ask a question or make a comment, and that will be the time, you can raise your hand at the bottom of your Zoom screen. Um, and we can unmute you in order to do so. I don't see any hands being raised at the moment.
Alright, so then, the other thing that I wanted to bring up with the board is, um, does the board want to support a limited change to small cell wireless communication antennas on utility poles? Um, I told you, I, we had an internal meeting and the town does not support that forty seven page bylaw. Um, so I sent, I sent some of you around some other draft, um, changes and, um, people, I mean, I started originally coming up with an idea of maybe you could have a thirty foot setback. Well, thirty foot setback does not work, uh, because it could be an effect of prohibition as well on small cell attachments. And so I worked with IT to come up with a number, and the best way to do is to have a setback of twenty feet.
What was the, what's the value of twenty foot setback? Is there, is there some kind of medical criteria or something that this is tied to, or is this just an arbitrary?
It's.
The request was negative.
The request was fifty or a hundred, um, and so if we're trying to work with any type of request, we're to try to give any type of setback to a housing, which you heard in the public hearings this summer, that, you know, you shouldn't be having them, or there's a perceived health impact, you know, but it gets close. Um, and, but the, the only thing the town will support is twenty feet. Was, I mean, I'm not even sure all factions of town support it, I just know that.
What's our typical setback on a street to a house?
Thirty feet.
So that, that's not even setback to a house.
That's, it seems, it seems to be, well, why you put that in a list is, just deal with it on a case to a case, because I, I, I would be more concerned about the proliferation of these devices in single locations, right? And this is the thing we asked them before to do, which is to evaluate the entire area and identify sort of plan, you know? The, the twenty feet seems to me to be this kind of arbitrary, and I, I don't think it's any different than not having anything.
Okay, so, I mean.
Just in particular, since, as Rebecca said, you know, house setbacks, thirty feet.
A house setback is thirty feet, but, you know, in some cases, I, I think most, I, I haven't helped a lot down in the mountains. You still have a lot of non-preexisting, non-conforming places where they're much closer to the park.
Um, so then twenty feet, how far could those be?
Twenty feet is how far.
Look, I don't think twenty feet is not a personal thing, but I understand also they can't zone, so they can't put this in.
Right.
So there's a fine line.
There's a fine line.
You're right.
What about twenty five?
The town, the town supports, the town.
Who's the town? Because we are the town.
Oh, alright, so.
And you know, this is, people are going to come out, you know, there are.
So we can tell you that in the, it was, which, who, 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 like, uh, who.
I know, it's IT. IT, the building commissioner, um, Patty's there, and a select board member who's there. And the problem is, what? Um, the problem is, is that the town, we don't have fires. We don't have, we, we'll never get it now because we missed that opportunity.
Yes, it is, I, I'm sorry, I don't know what you mean.
Fires will be at the.
Oh, fires, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, we missed that.
We missed that opportunity, so we only rely, we rely on Comcast. And, you know, people want to be able to have wireless communication. It's the way of the future, and so the town is very reluctant to have any type of bylaw prohibiting devices, prohibiting small cell networks. I mean, so, I, I just said, I would, I would bring this to you, if you don't choose, want to put it on the warrant, then you don't want to put it on the warrant. I did ask the new town council today, I mean, what experience they have with wireless communications. And somebody in their office has worked, done some work, and, um, I believe with Berlin. And wrote, uh, do have a copy of Berlin's bylaw, and to me, it seems quite rigorous as well.
So it won't be forty seven page one?
It's not forty seven, but it's probably about forty.
Twenty five.
It, it's, it's got different subsets, it's, it's, it's likely still.
So, um, you're likely good that if you know what this, there is a structure that it becomes a, um, citizen.
Citizen, it's your share.
The line is open now, but I, I mean, somebody has decided to.
That's great, but, but it always happens, right?
That can always happen, so.
I, I don't think that should be a reason for us to do it.
That's what we're trying to do.
Yeah, so, I mean, I can understand, but, but where's, that law, the bylaw, and that, ours actually.
It's about thirty feet.
To the hallway wall?
Yeah, for the hallway wall, yeah.
Probably twenty.
Yeah, almost thirty.
Twenty, twenty five.
I'm getting feet up on my hands.
It's a measure, I mean, they have a three foot.
Yeah, I see, and nobody was, was.
I, I did, I mean, I, I think twenty is not a lot, um. There was something like, I would not like to go in front of my house, and I will, but that's just my opinion, you're, you're really asking us, that's not what you're asking.
I'm asking you, do you want to put an article forward to town meeting or not? The article forward, this is the article I am suggesting. I do not have time to work on any type of more article before, before town meeting. The advertising has to go in, you know, in two weeks.
Did we?
I, I would, I would say that, sort of, my view on this, and this is just my view, is that to put forward a twenty foot distance suggests that there's some rationale that, that is tied into, you know, aesthetics and or, you know, sort of having enough buffer to prevent harm to people and stuff, you know, and I don't know, I wouldn't ever support that because I have no idea, right? It just feels like it's an arbitrary number, and it present, it's going to present itself as if there was some real sort of design, I, I guess, and, and I, I don't think there is.
No, I, I, there isn't, I think there isn't.
So, so I would say, you know, if we want to, we want to address something, that we should have the time to do it and not put something in that, that's sort of window dressing at some level, right? Because I, I just, I don't know why I would support twenty feet over twenty one feet versus, you know, forty feet, right?
I mean, there is a flaw in the bylaw right now, the way it reads, and the sentence, first sen, I mean, one of the sentences says, you know, um, a, a major site letter review, and then two other sentences down, it says, you know, this prior to public hearing on special permit, and then something on special permit, so.
That needs to be cleaned up.
If you wanted to just clean that, you could clean that this time, right, but.
That, that should be cleaned up, I mean, so. Yeah, it would be the red, it would just be the first red sentence, I would take, we would take out second red sentence in section A.
Yeah, can I? Yeah, I would agree with you, so, but I also want to say one other thing, and I agree with you, we don't, we're just making this up. But at the same time, we gotta have something, like, the people have spoken, they all came in and spoke to us and said, these are new, our bylaw doesn't really address those that, well, right, these are.
Our, our bylaw has something in there, and.
Those little antennas.
Yeah, and it, it's, it, it's got stuff in it, and I mean, we, we do, we do give some requirements of what they have to do. A lot of people felt that it, it didn't seem to be enough, et cetera, I mean.
Yeah. Well, there's two components to it though, right? One is the proliferation of these things, and it's sort of aesthetically and concentrations and stuff. And the other is sort of the medical art people brought forward, and you're never going to address the medical element with a twenty foot setback, right?
No, you're not, you're not.
And, and so I don't, I don't think we should pretend to address that. And, and it just felt to me like, I, I, I agree with you on the forty seven page thing, I was just, you know, that was just, don't ever do anything, right? Because that, that's kind of the way that was written. But it, it feels to me like maybe we should have more rigor in our review plan for the special permit that requires certain things from the, from the, you know, proponent. And also maybe set standards that say, you know, no, we're not going to put four of these on one pole, right? That's, that's, we don't want that at that, right? So that, so that there has to be, you know, kind of a better, well thought out distribution of these things. And it may, may ultimately preclude one vendor or another for putting, you know, a tenant in the same place, but should we care about that?
I, I don't think, I don't think, 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 certainly. Some of what Jessica said, this right now is a reaction.
Yes.
To, to a complaint that you.
I, I know, but it, no, I, I get that, I do.
So that's not, so that's what you've got, so I, that's why I actually agree with you that this, I would not support this because it's totally reactionary. Another, I thought, for which there is to what we really should say.
Yeah, what we're trying to accomplish, right?
Right, but, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, why not, um, put the, have the, uh, the small cell, I think, it would make the most sense to have the, the small cell limit instead of twenty feet, to be thirty feet, so that it is in line with the law.
No, no, I, that, that was my argument too, and IT will not support that. Because that, in some places, that's an effective prohibition because of a preexisting, non-conforming lot, if your whole street is preexisting, non-conforming, you, you can't have.
Except without, except with, with, how about something, allow a special permit?
Well, it's all special proof.
No, it isn't right now.
It isn't right now.
It is not, that's, that's.
Well, so.
I, that was my, that was my, that was my logic too, but. I thought that was my, that was my, that was my logic too, Bob.
So IT and IT and T is saying that like, oh, no, we don't.
Our IT, our IT, our IT.
I'm just saying, how about, how about if you can put one at the White House?
Why don't we just tell our IT tough, like if it's a non-conforming law and, you know, they don't have the right setback, like, then you stop.
Because.
But you couldn't, so you could not put one out of the White House, not one anywhere near San Marcos.
Right. And and that's where they're saying that they need coverage.
So. And they, well, and they're, they're, and they're using like a Homeland Security argument for like some law passed back in like two thousand and two for, you know, for emergency situations. So they're using that as cover, but really, this is more of a PD's issue.
I guess.
Well, it's a it's a money issue for podcast, but this.
But I mean, so we like, if we set at the, like, as you said, at thirty, and IT's like, no, that's that's prohibitive, like, I'm sorry, but where does IT come in this whole situation where they can, you know, like veto what you like.
We're not, we, there, 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 it's not just IT. The meeting that I had with, you know, several departments and a member of the select board, they want to, they they want to be able to provide you, the residents of the town of Situate, the ability to have wireless communications. Because
Totally.
That's that's the way to work.
I get, like, you know, we're gonna, like, the town, like, that with that, you know?
That wasn't, that wasn't discussed either.
This, this type of proposal, like, they're gonna battle it out in town meeting and they're gonna lose.
Yeah, we're.
Like, they're gonna be like, no, like, we want four thousand for this.
Yeah.
We don't want any one that might have an ID.
Those are a lot of their own.
I just said it, sorry, I interrupted you, but how about something like, because I I understand what you're saying. So we're talking about, we have a very unique town, right? With that, with itself.
Well, yeah.
So is, maybe this isn't gonna work. So is the White House still in that way or is it the all non-conform?
And most.
Most of those lots are non-conforming because they were all five thousand square foot.
They're all non.
Yes. Most of them were all five thousand square foot lots that were laid out prior to zoning.
What if it said, like, you had something like twenty feet from any structure or law, but no one bet you'll be closer than thirty feet to any one.
We can't.
I just, I I think you, I think we're headed down.
I think we're headed down radical.
And what will happen is that twenty foot will end up being fifty or sixty or seventy feet out of town.
Yeah.
We have to.
It will be amended six ways to some.
Right. And 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 I don't think, I guess.
No, I I don't, I mean, I just.
I don't think we have any way to justify the number other than, oh, you know, the setback for a house is thirty feet, so that's what we live with, right?
Right, but the
I mean, that's.
A base fifteen units per right, per acre, that's just a made up number.
Well, it's well, it's intended to meet the requirements of law.
Of the state, but where did the state come up with that number?
Right. Doesn't matter at this point, right?
They called that, well, it doesn't matter, but I'm just saying, there's a lot of numbers that any setback was somebody just decided this is what our setback, so it depends a number. May I?
Yeah, but but people, I, I think what we're proposing is to put a limitation on something that I have no idea why we're we're proposing twenty feet or even thirty feet.
Well, you can.
Well, when you're at the, when you're at the bylaw, this said sort of thirty feet, and I know, I know that, you know, it's not, we're, all we have to argue is, hey, that's the setback by law that we that we have. So non-conforming laws are non-conforming laws, but we're conforming this regulation to what the bylaw is. And, you know, we say, okay, that thirty feet, you have to have that thirty feet buffer, but then, you know, once you get to the road in the town, like, town business happens on the town road. If we do it at a less than that, then we have to get into the argument of, you know, any kind of medical effects or like the warming.
Not that if we're gonna get an argument of thirty feet.
How many, how many?
It it sounds like.
Yeah. Definitely get that argument of thirty.
It sounds like that perhaps we should put nothing forward.
But at least a thirty feet, we can argue that it's the by.
We should not put anything forward at this time because you, we don't have, we, it's a, you're right, it's a reaction.
And I would say, look at the discussion that's gone on here tonight.
Trying to show a.
The time, a bazillion people. I say, let it go for now.
Do you want to change the required, do you want to change from cyclone review to special permit?
Love to.
The first, the first red sentence.
I'd like something that gives us the ability.
Yeah.
Yeah, I like that.
Special permit.
How it all gets.
So they'll do this as, this is housekeeping.
Right.
Because right now, the paragraph is incorrect as it's written. So we'll just do the housekeeping change. We'll do the, we'll do the two articles. That's it. And we're not going, we're not putting any standards on it. And maybe now that, you know, this new town council, you know, has had some experience, maybe, you know, at some point in the future, we can decide if we really want to tackle this issue and have the need for a working session.
Are we taking out the wireless communication agenda? Must be, need the session.
Yes, yes.
Taking that out, good. So it's just a one, it's just a one.
So I'm, I'm first, first red red check.
Okay.
And I need to re-clarify what Rebecca said. We are responding to. Probably not as time to say why, but AT is in the chain, we have, we have got to work on it. So we we obviously, we are responding. That's.
Not the way they want, but.
No, yeah, it's still with you. It's under consideration. We're doing the very best we can and we just don't have enough information.
Yeah, so so just following up on that though. So if that's the sort of discussion attempt meeting, then the question's gonna be, well, what are you gonna do? And what are you gonna do upon? Right? If you're gonna look, if you're gonna look at it, then we should have like a plan.
Wow.
Right?
Right, we should have a plan, but I again.
Right, so like the next six months, we'll evaluate it and, you know, maybe the next annual town meeting will bring.
Well, that's what the planning board will have to decide after town meeting. After town meeting, usually we sit down, we'll talk about what our priorities are. And, you know, we we've had some priorities that are on the list for a long time and we just, sometimes we get waylaid by this, like this legislation that's waylaid. You said you wanted to work on accessory dwelling units before. You know, we have to figure out what the priority is and the timing.
I don't know, just thinking if you get into the discussion at town meeting, they're gonna set your priority.
Right.
By saying, by trying to pass something that says you're gonna, you're gonna.
No, I I I'm not saying that that's, I that's not, that's not.
I think that would be beyond scope, that's right, of the article.
This is. Yeah. And like I said, right now, that's just discussion among us to say that we are responding, we, I'm sure they're listening and they want to hear what we have to say. We are, we are looking at, we have listened to you. We don't have a a confidence of right now. And I know, I know that's very bad, you know, but that's, that's what we're supplanting the situation.
But I mean, I think our job is to take the time to get our.
Clear. Into plain water, not not for you.
And and not being reactionary.
Not being reactionary.
And I think one of the answers to that is Situate is a very unique town with a lot of different zoning areas. One, it's not a place that one.
One size fits all.
One size fits all. Therefore, we change it to a special permit as opposed to a right here.
No, 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 because.
It's not.
It wasn't regularly, it was.
It was supposed to be a special permit.
It was, it was, it was mixed, it was mixed language in there. Right now, it says cyclone approval, and then it says the special permit, the special permit.
We clarified.
Right.
And so the justice has clarified, the attempt was a special permit.
So the intent was a special permit, right? Right, so pretty clear.
This is clarifying, fixing that language. So that's really what it is.
Right, which gives us the ability to do it on a case-by-case basis at least, right?
Right.
As opposed to, you know, write some, some broad, you know, certain criteria.
Roughly.
Right. Right.
We don't, we actually don't have any power to turn down these telecommunications companies. They want to put a a repeater up on the top of the pole, link it up a pole, they can just do it. And they they kind of.
No, but they still have to, they still have to go through town.
You do, okay.
Yeah, yeah. And if they don't, I mean, it's it's sort of this thing where, yeah, you could get into the law, right? But if they're not responsive to, you know, sort of the town approach and requirements for review, then you can deny it just on that, right?
Right.
Oh, we're not gonna tell you anything. Okay, but then we're not gonna prove anything, right?
Right, then let them take it to court, you know, you know.
Yeah, but I I think we're pretty solid grounds that we said, you know, we wanted to see a game plan and we wanted you to present all this stuff and you chose not to, right?
Right. Right.
That was your choice, but, you know, that's not how it works.
Alright, so I will go tomorrow and let them know that, I mean, we already have a placeholder for our three A compliance and I already have a temporary placeholder for 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 wireless. I'll just say, we just, it's very simple.
Doing the housekeeping thing.
It's a housekeeping thing and I will let town council know that it's just a housekeeping, just, we're doing this just simple housekeeping, right?
Interesting to see if um, that forty something page proposal goes before, before the warrant closes, which is next week.
When the warrant closes, on the nineteenth.
That's what I mean, other two weeks.
Two, oh, wait a half, wait a half, yeah.
Yeah.
And that was written in a way that it would, there would never be anything approved.
From that point, yeah.
But of course it was, but it, you know, it's, I think it's, the pendulum's gone way the other way on that one, right?
So, so maybe.
So that's all I had for the zoning workshop. Um, that's where we are. And so the public hearing will be January eleventh. Um, I'll be working the town council and, you know, Chari and I will be um, finalizing the zone, finalizing everything, getting um, getting lead land and pick what we're supposed to and um, filing for our mandatory misuse district and for our preliminary files.
Should we go first or should we see everybody else to talk to us about our public hearing about our wireless? It's not public hearing, right?
This is a public workshop, but if you'd like to make a comment or spread the concern, um, now would be your time. Can you, you can please raise your hand at the bottom of your um Zoom screen and we can unmute you to participate in the meeting.
I'm with your motion.
Yeah, second.
Alright.
No, you did that. You just, you just ended the meeting. Alright, thank you. Thank you, Pat. Wait a minute. No, you can walk.
Oh, oh. Presenting an advisory. Yep, no, he's. Okay.